I'll put back in here, so. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would like to be able to move forward with it. We have a dollar amount that we agreed to. Maybe kind of prioritize what we want to get done. I don't know if any of the other council members submitted any suggestions as was suggested at the workshop, that they submit anything else they're looking at. But I think it's important to move forward while we have the room as vacant as we do. As far as colors, I think you go neutral colors, neutral balances that match the color that you pick. I think that the chairs, we look at getting, you know, bids on more plastic chairs. The tablecloths, you look and get bids on that. But I don't, I mean, I surely am not going to paint it purple and put big, bright, you know, bold striped curtains up. The purpose of redoing the room is to make it comfortable for the people that are here, make it look nice, not gaudy, not intrusive, but to make it look nice. And I think I would not agree to anything that isn't that, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
Again, I guess I, maybe this is my understanding, but I didn't think so, but, you know, based on the workshop, you know, we discussed, again, I thought it was, are okay for you to go ahead and start getting bids and discussing how we wanted to do it. We talked about, do we take the boards down? Do we take the maps down? What do we do with the maps? We were going to talk to all the committees and find out what committees wanted maps up, who, you know, uses them, who doesn't use them. And then all of a sudden, now we're going and we're voting on. And again, I'm very concerned, once they start digging in under these windows, what they're going to find. Because you can see under almost every single one, there's water damage underneath there. It's quite evident. And I guarantee you, start digging in there, and there's significant water damage, that $5,000 is going to look pretty small. So if we approved a goal, not to exceed $5,000 to paint and fix the walls, they start digging into it, and we find out rapidly that it's in excess of that, then what do we do? So I think we need to know exactly.
We put the tables over those spots.
Unfortunately, there's a lot of spots.
We haven't even decided where the $5,000 is going to come from yet. That's not even part of the motion, or it's not in the budget. There's, when the bills come in, I don't know if Cory is even supposed to take the money out of it, so.
All right, well, I'll move this forward. I think that certainly it begs more detail. And if we have to move stuff around, we have to move stuff around. I think we need to be careful with the piano. And certainly, the likely spot for the piano is going to be underneath the TV where the safe was. Be nice to get that wall painted, but the piano just has to be moved. I don't know if the magic lighters will do that or not, but right now, the flooring people recommended that be moved on plywood, so it doesn't dig up the floor. I think the rest of the stuff can be carried. I don't think the rest of those chairs should come back in here. But I'm willing to put together more formal proposal, if you want to amend your motion accordingly.
So make a motion to, to get quotes for the work to, for the repairs to City Hall, as referenced in the RCA.
And I will say, in that, when I'm talking to people, they're probably going to have to dig into the wall, and we'll have a little holes for, until we make a final decision. But as you say, they're going to have to poke in there and see what they got. So we'll have to live with that for a bit. But I would, I'd recommend, we've got baseboard of varying shape and design all the way around, and a trim of varying colors, I would recommend that we also take a look at painting that a white. So whatever neutral color comes on the walls, it makes it pop a little more.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
It probably would be nice to finish that other wall with the same type of trim, so it matches, or.
Yeah, you know, I was looking at that, you know, we got the little baseboard and shoe over here, we got the plainboard over here. So we can, we can see what that would take as well. All right, so you've amended your motion. Who seconded, Mary?
Mary.
You okay with that?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
The issue here was amending the other City Council policy 1-1-11, as far as when adding the D back and having the questions about when to get the materials. I sent an email late before you, I'm guessing she just didn't have a chance to get it. Where we talked about at the workshop about, that the bills would potentially need more time to process, but that everything else, would there be an issue if everything else could still be distributed by Monday evening?
Mr. Mayor, as you've seen from my email that was presented to you all of you, it's not just the bills. There's other things that usually end up coming up. As I indicated, May is a good example of a month to show how the first of the month happens to be on the first, the Monday, right before our council workshop. You know, you now want Lori to do all this stuff with the code enforcement stuff. You want more detailed minutes, and now you're going to push our timeframe of when we're supposed to have our packets together? It seems like you're just adding, 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 and you're not giving any consideration of all the other things in all of our daily, monthly, weekly, quarterly jobs that we have to take on. And now you're going to push this to even to the limit. So, no, I don't think that it's going to be appropriate to have those packets done by the Monday. There's many a times that it's not going to end up working out. One of my good examples was that the Monday before elections, absolutely not. We had over 100 people come in in one day. How are we expected to even take on that role of putting a packet together? And then, if you're going to make the motion to do that, you know, I'm sorry, we're just, there's just going to be times we're not going to be able to abide by that. You guys already have it instilled that the, you guys are supposed to get your stuff to me by noon, or everybody else that wants to put this stuff on the agenda. But that doesn't mean that there isn't additional research or information that we might pull based off of that, what you're presenting. So I don't think it's reasonable to ask of that.
So let me ask, and the information goes into the packet. If it was to you, say by Friday night?
But then you also need to keep in mind, the example that I gave you of May, that's the month before then. So you would be giving me that information in April for the May, we still haven't done the month end. Month end cannot be done until the first of the month. And then again, usually the Mondays is usually when I do payroll, whether it's council payroll or whether it's staff payroll. And that takes another few hours to do. And if things are still coming in, I mean, it's sometimes hard enough just to get the agenda items from you guys in the time that it's supposed to be.
Well, but let me ask, I mean, I think that's, that's the reason for, for having this discussion. If the deadline for council, for contractors, was close of business Friday, so nothing's coming in after that, except your bills, which is big enough. But say that that stuff was all in, and maybe it's not Friday, maybe it's Thursday. What would it take to say, if everything was in by then, and all I had to do was the bills? And the bills maybe can't be done by Monday night. You know, if it's, if it's the first of the month, that might still be coming in later. If that was the only thing in the packet that we had to look through at the end before the workshop, would be significantly different than what we have now. So is that, if you didn't have, if you took the bills out of the equation, and everybody else had a deadline, you know, if the request for action doesn't come in, if a contractor's invoice doesn't come in, they wait a month. If that were strictly enforced.
But you also need to keep in mind that, again, there's two staff members, and you're binding us to that where, what happens? Look at the case of this last week. I was sick for two days. Luckily, I had everything ready. But then, come Friday, Lori's sick. And now Lori is sick again. You know, it's like, you've got to keep in consideration that with the two staff people, Mary had called today. I was probably in the back room or the restroom. I didn't hear her phone call. So Lori's getting emails that I'm not necessarily getting. I'm getting emails that Lori's not necessarily.
Oh, and I understand that there's going to be exceptions, you know, when you're dealing with, with a staff this size.
But if there's exceptions, and you're binding us to that, what if we don't meet that deadline date?
Well, but what I'm saying is, right now, you do anyway. Wednesday night is, is, it is what it is. Wednesday nights, you're done.
Yeah.
And we're just saying, we pick another night. You're done Friday. And what isn't in, isn't in. And yes, understandably, if one or both of you are sick, something's going to happen. Something's going to fall by the wayside. So, so again, there are going to be exceptions. The, the law that says we can have early voting and hundreds of people coming in to vote, it'll probably worsen next year, next election. But again, that's, that's a week out of two years.
I understand that, but you still don't understand my point, too. That you're now putting all these other things that you want us to do, but then you're also now cramming us to get this done and running around with that as well.
Well, and again, I'm not saying cramming this, it's just, it's got a deadline already.
Yes, but then you also can need to keep in mind that P and Z, when they end, that would be the same week that I have to try to get the stuff from Liz by. And you know how difficult sometimes it is to get the stuff from Liz by? And what if Liz ends up being gone on vacation that week, or for those next couple of days? Now we've got that stuff that we are not getting, because we're pushing our deadline back further.
Well, and, and again, if, if a contractor isn't getting their stuff in on time, if it's their invoices, that's their problem. If it's our stuff, that's our problem, and we have to deal with the contractor that way.
Right.
The, the problem becomes, if it, if it gets backed up, it's certainly difficult for you, but the challenge is for us, like last week, we got all these pages Wednesday night. And, and we have to make the decisions on it.
But you don't make decisions on Thursday. You usually have your workshop, and then you sit there and debate everything, and then I still have to be getting stuff for you, for Tuesday. So it's not really whether you get it Tuesday night, Monday night, you're still going to be debating stuff on Thursday, and I'm still going to be getting the information for Tuesday.
Well, but I, I don't necessarily agree with that, because if we had it early enough, we might be able to, to do some of that investigation ourselves. We're discussing it in detail on Thursday night, because it's the first time we've seen it. You know, I mean, if you get it Wednesday night, you don't have a chance to ask any questions.
Well, you wanted my opinion, my opinion is, no. I don't think that the Monday deadline is going to work all the time. It may work some other times, but if you want my personal opinion, no.
What if we were to see how often it worked as opposed to didn't work, and then we understand it's not working this time, because it's the first of the month and I don't have the bills? And again, if we're simply the bills, and everything else was to us, because generally, you know, there are occasions where we have questions with bills.
Yeah.
And, and most of those have to do with contracted services.
Yeah.
And we rarely question things outside of that. There's sometimes, some of Joe's expenditures are, are bigger, but the questions usually come up with, what was this contractor doing here? You got $7,400 worth of planning expenditures, and they have to have it in?
Right, and, and.
And if they don't have it in, it's kind of like Bob said when we first put the deadline on it. If they're not in, they wait a month.
And it's not, it's not always those vendors, it's Canexus Energy, right, Hennepin.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. I have no problem with those bills coming in when they come in, because you're not going to change Canexus deadlines. And I can't remember in nine years that we ever questioned a Canexus bill, or, you know, those types of vendors. The ones we are, is somebody who's billing us $7,400 for subjective fees. And those ones, they can, it's Friday deadline. You have it in Friday, because the council needs to see it. Because if they got questions, they want to ask it before Thursday. Because otherwise, we're putting you on the spot, what, what is this? And then you have to go back and then do the research.
Yeah, I get your point.
And, and so I'm saying that, that the majority of it could be done. And what isn't, for reason of sickness, or, you know, it's a bill that's, you know, a utility vendor, or something like that, is less of a concern. The big issues are there, the requests for council actions are there, so people can look at them ahead of time and, and ask a question. You know, they can take their, their one, their one question and say, you know, I want to call the author, just, and that's what you're doing. What are you thinking here? I mean, that, that can be a good time to say, have you talked to staff about this? And you take your one call, and you call the author and say, what happened, what are you thinking?
I just still think that it's going to be a, a big issue with the planning and zoning stuff. They meet the fourth Tuesday of the month, and for the most part, that means that it would, that would give Liz a matter of not even a week to get her stuff compiled and get it to us for it to be in your packet.
Mr. Mayor. Let's make a suggestion. Why not, instead of changing the policy now, why not give it a trial run, if you will? Say, okay, this is what we want to try to do. We want to try to have everybody deadline of Friday. We want to try to have staff and see how it goes. And then if staff, after a six-month trial or whatnot, can accomplish it, and it's not a big deal, then we go and change the policy to read that way.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
The policy was changed in January, and my intention, my original intention of removing D was that the sooner we had the information to Cory and to, into the office, the sooner that packets would be distributed. That's why D was originally removed. Cory mentioned, hey, what happened to D in the three days? It was my interpretation that the three days would be the Monday night, but Cory was saying, well, the three days would mean that the packets are ready by Thursday night. That doesn't necessarily work out. So if the, if we can agree that we can, that the packets can, the intent is to try to get as much information as we can out sooner than later, and if things have to go a little longer, like bills, then there's no, then there's no reason, there's, then D can be left out in the first, like it was originally. Because when, because it originally said, three days prior to the next council meeting, and Cory can correct me if I'm wrong, that would have been, and you were going for that three days off in front of the Tuesday meeting.
Correct.
Right. So that would mean packets come out on Thursday, which doesn't necessarily make, doesn't necessarily work out with as far as the workshop goes. So.
And, and were you thinking the three days was before the workshop, so you were thinking Monday night?
Well, when the three days said before the next council meeting, that would have been the Thursday night. So the, so the three days would have been Monday night.
See, now, that's part of the issue, is, you know, there's two different philosophies here. Workshop, you know, some don't consider that as a council meeting per se, where the council meetings are the first or second Tuesday of every month, that's the council meeting. Workshops are the workshops. So I can see, you know, there's the whole.
Yeah, that, I think that's been kind of debated in all of these things tonight. What, what is a council meeting? And technically, by state statute, there's a council meeting, there's a special meeting, and there's an emergency meeting. The clarification, I think, is why this has come up, is, is what is that? It would seem, if the workshop is where we discuss most of the issues, the details should be before the workshop, and then it's simply cleanup from the workshop to the council meeting, and the council meeting should go relatively quickly if, if we've done a good job in the workshop. So the key is getting information and enough time to make the workshop go efficiently, so the questions can be asked or researched before then. I, I think it's, it's a good idea to give it a try and see what we stumble on. You know, again, if, if we're, if we're in a spirit of cooperation, we say, let's give it our best shot, and say, okay, really, the only thing that is hanging us up is a few vendors that we're not going to change. We're not going to change Canexus billing, so. The, the big thing could be P and Z, and we have to see what staff can do. But again, if we start dealing with exceptions, instead of, we always get it on Wednesday night, we can say, here's the exceptions to that. Now we, we have the most of it available by Monday. And most of it's available, and the exceptions are easier to deal with.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm just, I prefer to run a trial basis, rather than put it in a policy and, and, you know, and shoot for that goal and see what impact it truly has, and then, and then we can adjust from there, or whatnot.
But I do think the information needs to get out earlier, and if the majority of it can, we're going to be more effective at our meetings. And you say, if a couple of vendors like Canexus can't, we'd never challenge a Canexus bill yet. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm for trying it, but I just don't think that right now, to make it a policy that I know that we're not always going to be able to adhere to, I don't think that that's appropriate, because there's going to be several times that we're not going to meet that deadline.
Well, I mean, whether it's a policy or not, I think that's just reality. And, and I think there certainly are some policies that we probably don't adhere to 100%.
Well, but then.
I, I think that.
I don't want it to come back that all of a sudden, there's a motion, and then it's brought up at a meeting that staff is not.
You don't want the hammer over your head?
Well, no, I don't think it's brought up meetings that were not doing the job that we were directed to do via amendments.
Not following council directions.
Yeah. When sometimes it's going to be clearly impossible for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I, I think the better way to approach this would be to not change the policy at this point, but not only to work with staff, we should be asking them, what can we do to help you, so that we can get our packets sooner and faster, to help us out? And that's how we should be working together. And, and let's let her think about that and work that on that, and with the understanding to try, try to get us our packets as soon as we can, so we can move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
And to, to your comment, Councilmember Bettinger, that was the intention. This was added back in for discretion, for discussion at Cory's request. So the discuss, so we had the discussion on Thursday, so that's why this was, that's why this was put back in here, so we could have the discussion about what that means to add it back in. And so we've done that. I'm totally okay withdrawing it, and if we can, we can see where things go, and just leave now, and we can, if we can, the sooner we can get information on the packets, the better. And I mean, we can go from there and reevaluate it as, reevaluate it as needed.
All right, so, so I do think that we need to make the recommendation that if we're going to have a trial run, then, then the object is to have all information in by when? Is Friday end of business?
Well, then, if it's at the Friday end of the business, I wouldn't be working it until Monday anyways.
Right, but, but you're getting it Monday noon or Monday afternoon. What works for you? Is it Thursday end of business?
I would say Thursday end of business, because then that way, Friday, if I need to start compiling the data, can make copies in that.
So, so let's, let's go with Thursday end of business. And Cory, then if you can just track the exceptions to that, and say, yep, everything was in by Thursday end of business, here's how it's working, and these things aren't working for this reason. And, and let's start with that, and, and see where we go. Because the, again, the object is to get it to the council with enough time to actually process it and come to a meeting prepared, which I think is reasonable expectations perfectly.
And, Mr. Mayor, just through your, how I'm understanding it, too, is you guys may be getting the stuff in advance, but it's not going to be getting onto the website then, until the complete packet is ready? Because it's going to be too difficult.
I, I understand, well, I understand, does the council understand that?
Oh, yeah.
That the expectation is you're not feeding the website every time. You're getting it to us, and then when you've got a complete packet, it goes on the website for everybody else. The, the main thing is that the council comes to meetings with it. And the rest of the people can get it when it's done. And yes, we're not expecting you to continue every, every few minutes. And, you know, some of this stuff, I mean, is there a chance that some of it doesn't need to be scanned? If it's typed in the system, can it just go electronically to the website? You have to scan everything?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we try to scan it always in one big, so that it follows exactly the order of the agenda. So it's not like we just scan one document at a time, and we just, we, we actually physically grab the whole packet and run it through the scanner.
Okay.
And then it runs it that way.
All right, any other discussion on that? So the council direction at this point is to have Cory work on that and give us feedback. And right now, for people that want to get things in on the agenda, Thursday end of business before the workshop. So Thursday before the workshop end of business. And communicate that to the contractors, and, and if Liz is going to have a problem, give us feedback. Anything else on that? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Flying along. Item H.
Um, there's no, I moved, there's no, this can be withdrawn. There's no, there's still stuff that needs to, thinking more about it, there's some wording that I need to work through, so right this time, there's no action.
All right. Zip through that one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I, I would like to make a motion to have the Heritage Fest, to, to waive, to waive the facility fees for the Heritage Fest. And have the Heritage Fest Committee work with the maintenance staff to complete the repairs that were documented last fall. Have city staff to document staff hour, staff, staff hours that are, were for the Heritage Fest. That the 2016 tax return be available when they're, when it, be available to the city when it's, when it, when it is completed. Have the Heritage Fest document their volunteer hours in total. Have the city donate $2,000, $2,500 for, towards the Heritage Fest, and request that the Heritage Fest staff to work with the fire department and/or the sheriff for possible volunteer hours for the involvement with the sheriff and fire department in Heritage Fest.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Councilmember O'Brien.
Councilmember Rainville.
Just a clarification of, when you say fire department and sheriff's department, and working with them for volunteer hours, now, we don't, the sheriff just comes, and, so you want their hours tracked also? I guess I'm not real clear on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Councilmember Rainville, the question came up at the workshop was that there are, there are hours where the fire department is getting paid for services.
Right.
And so that if, if the fire department and/or the sheriff gets paid for those services, to see if they are open to donating those hours for the Heritage Fest as volunteer time? I don't know if, who, I don't know if.
Well, actually, that, that's not, it's only germane to this committee, this council, is if it's, if it's going to be billed on the city time. I don't think the sheriff bills us anything. But if the fire department is charging for it, then we have to track it, if the city's paying for it. If you're saying, within that, if, if the. if the city's paying for it. If you're saying, within that, if the Heritage Committee wants to see if they want to volunteer time, you know, if the sheriff wants to volunteer time for whatever, for emergency services or whatever, they're free to do that. But that would just, you know, if the city's paying for it, we're going to track it. Right?
If the city's paying for it, and there's, and if there's the opportunity for that time to be volunteered instead of having us pay for it, it would be appreciated.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember O'Brien. I would just tell you that the sheriff's office, as in all law enforcement, they don't volunteer anything. But what they do as a community service, they do attend those types of events. There's no billing for it. Whether we would have a contract with this, with them or not, whether the city has a contract or not, sheriff's office attends those events because it allows them to showcase their products, their services. So, I can ask, we can ask them how many hours they are there. And let me just clarify something. The only donated hours or volunteer hours would be reserve hours. Sometimes they have reserve officers come up, and that's volunteer, because that's a volunteer organization.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if the council's really that interested in that part, because most of the time, they're sitting around yakking with other people near the, whatever they have on display. So, it's not like they're working the thing. So, I think, I think we covered everything that I heard. I was going down my list as you're reading that, that we talked about on Thursday. So, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Along with that, if I could ask, I would like to go back and look at like last year, for example, and know what the total cost to the city towards that event is, which would include all those things. Because I think, in a spirit of transparency, you know, we're giving them a big chunk of facilities use, giving them money and other things. So, I think everybody should be aware of exactly how much the city is paying for that event, especially being it's not a city-run event.
And then it's not a city-run event, so, but it is a city benefiting event. I mean, there are people drawn into the city, and it certainly does accentuate our facilities, but...
Mr. Mayor. And to go along with that, you know, I have gotten, you know, comments from a lot of citizens in the past, and not too past, you know, that, you know, asking, you know, why is the city paying for this when, you know, the event itself has been going downhill, or has been declining? You know, there's less and less things for kids to do. You know, originally, the very first one we had, or the carnival was completely there. Understand why they're not now. But if you look, last year, there was a petting zoo, a Ferris wheel, and a slide. There's not a lot for kids to do. So, again, I've had a lot of people come to me and say, you know, for what the city invests into it, there's not a lot there. So, again, in transparency, we should be showing people what the city truly has into it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
After having volunteered for the Heritage Festival since '08, I don't see where we're going downhill. We don't have the carnival, and there was, that's a financial reason we don't. The majority of the...
And I just say, the carnival didn't want to come back because the kids wanted to play on the free stuff. Carnival stuff is really expensive, and they, they were saying, with all their employees watching the kids play on the playground. And so, for some of the carnival stuff, it was, they didn't want to come back because they couldn't sell tickets. It was too expensive. And I think that the rides they do have, because they're, they're so cheap, but you're right, there's two rides.
Well, again, I'm, I'm expressing, just like Councilmember Rainville has in the past, citizens have come to me and told me this, so I'm expressing it.
And to Councilmember Rickert, I wish you would refer them to the festival.
And I have.
We, okay, well, we've not gotten any calls. So, you know, majority of our events are geared to the kids. It's a free, we don't have the carnival because, again, as the mayor said, but they also didn't pay us. And so, financially, we said, no, because we had costs involved in that, and we weren't able to recoup our costs. And we're very careful with our money. We have many free events for kids to do. Ninety percent of what's there is for kids. We have a limited space here, and last year, we had a rifle or a shooting range for them. We try to bring in new things and free things for people. And that's, you know, because our goal is for families to come with their kids. As far as last year's dollars, I don't have any problem with that. I would ask that staff then provide us, Cory, at one time, you did a printout of the fire department's expenses and the staff's expenses, but there was an adjustment in the staff's expenses, so I want to make sure that we have the correct number for staff, the correct dollars for staff.
All right, anything else on that?
Mr. Mayor, just to ask, with Mayor, did you want that as voted wages again?
Yes.
Or how did you want that? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Item J.
Got to load on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item J. Councilmember Rainville.
I move that Councilmember Bryan developed the information for the city update for the chamber newsletter.
Is there Brian going to second that? Good, we got him to second. Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that the donation for the shelter be removed from the consent side agenda. And I just, I have a concern here, and I appreciate the generosity of A&amp;B Welding. However, I think we're setting some precedent, and it's, it's not good. This is the second time now that council and our staff has gone out and solicited either funds or product, in large funds and large product, from a business or residence. And there's been no input from council on any of those. And the first one was the audiovisual. Second is the warming shelter. And again, I appreciate their generosity, but these private conversations between staff, council, or committee members, I don't believe is appropriate. It takes the remainder of the council out of the conversation, and then puts something in front of us that we're pretty much obligated to vote yes for. And, you know, how would you like it if I told people, you know what, you want to come up and watch your kids play on the playground equipment? Why don't you donate some couches and chairs, and we'll leave them out there, and we'll just accept them later? And that's a tacky thing, but it, I believe something of this magnitude is something that the council should have a discussion on. And by members doing, having these private conversations, we don't know if there were agreements. I mean, we don't know anything, because all we know is something is, a check is donated, or a product is delivered, and now we're pretty much obligated to take it. And I just don't think that's right.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rickert. Two issues. Obviously, this was on the agenda at the workshop. Why does Councilman Rainville not speak up at the workshop? So, again, the rest of us knew what may be said today, so we could get some background data and, and support something either one way or another with it. I think it's wrong for you to sit there at the workshop and say nothing, and then bring it up tonight. Number two, who solicited it? Nobody that I'm aware of went to A&amp;B and asked them for a warming house. So, I guess I'm not sure where you're getting information, that somebody went to A&amp;B to solicit getting a warming house.
Well, I have no idea, because all I know is this has come up. It's something that we've said, Park and Rec has said, we will need a shelter, we'll need this, we'll need that, and now all of a sudden, it's there. It was never brought to council as a discussion, and I just think that's wrong. And to your, your question about why didn't I bring it up on Thursday, because I was puking because of the smell of this room, and I'm ready to puke right now again. So, I, I didn't. We went through a consent, we were done, and it, nothing on consent got talked about. But I just think this is wrong. I just, the council has, should have the opportunity to discuss something of this magnitude before the item is placed on our property.
And, Mr. Mayor, again, I think it's completely wrong for a council member to make accusations that people are out soliciting businesses for something, when they, when they admit, they have no clue if that's true or not. Number one. Number two, I have no issues if, if there's a local business who wants to donate and give the city something that probably costs $25,000 to $30,000, that the city then doesn't have to invest that money in. I don't see any issue in that. You know, as far as I'm aware, did this, and Cory could answer this better than I, did the city have to sign, A&amp;B required the city to sign any contract or anything, asking for it, or agreeing to anything for it? You know, it's something that they chose to do, and again, as far as I'm aware, no one that I know went to them to solicit.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
So, in all the times it was mentioned, either at council meetings or at Park and Rec meetings, that there, people are talking to A&amp;B about needs and things like that, no one ever once said, we need a warming house, and can you donate it?
Not that. The only conversations that A&amp;B had ever come up with, and which, they built the nets, which I wasn't aware that they were talking about doing. We had, we had talked to, I had talked to Mike Tell, who works there, about them possibly paying for footings, if we decided to do footings underneath the boards for, have it as a permanent structure. Other than that, as far as I'm aware, there's never been any conversations with A&amp;B about a warming house.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
And just because somebody has donated something, or is willing to donate something, you can say no. I mean, the money that was donated for this system inside City Hall here, we could have said no. We could have gave the money back to the Lions. They would have gladly given it to somebody else. We can say no to that warming house. I'm sure A&amp;B Welding can come over and pick it up and take it back. But the opportunity just happened to be there. They had, they had something, and it, it'll meet our purposes, it'll serve our needs, it'll work well. I never talked to them, I didn't ask for it. And I guess we can vote it up or down tonight, and if we don't want it, they'll, they'll take it out of there, so.
If I'm hearing right, though, what I'm hearing is, the question as to, in a case like this, it is a significant donation. It's very generous. And I've talked to a number of people over there, and thanked them for their generosity. I think that the issue at hand here is, it's something that obligates the city, like this does. You know, we rearranged our building, we've trained people, we've, we've changed our practices because, and in this case, it was solicited. We went out and asked people for donations. And then it was, it obligated us to do certain things with it. In this case, I will say, I do remember hearing it at park meetings, it would be good if they could donate a warming house, because they're the most likely people to. But, but that's a separate issue. I think that, if I'm hearing right, and maybe I'm not, I'm interpreting here, but something happened where a very nice, very expensive, very heavy building is, has been placed before the council actually received it. You know, there was no discussion. It's in place. And in talking to A&amp;B, they will have to come pick it back up, because there's no footings underneath it. It can't sit where it is, and we don't even know if that's where the rink stays. But we're assuming that with all the work that went in, that's where the rink stays, and especially if we put in footings for boards and whatever else. But, you know, they, they understand that if it was going to get used this year, there's no power to it, there's no footings underneath it, something more will have to be done to it. And I think that the question is, should that have been placed, should that have been in use already before the council had any say about it? Because it is obligating us to, to some additional funds. And some questions as to, we talked about at the workshop, it's hours of operation. Is it, is it safe being unlocked all the time? And so, there were some legitimate questions. And I understand, you know, the timing was, the rink's there, the building's now available, and they are willing to put it down and pick it back up until footings are put back in underneath it. So, it seemed like a no-brainer. If people are skating, then they've got a place to skate. It did obligate the city to some things, and it was done before the council actually had any, any input on it. And so, I'm not going to put words in Councilmember Rainville's mouth, but I, I would say, it does make sense when you have something that's significant and that generous, that you don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth. You don't want to insult them in saying, wonderful that you did that. But it would be nice to have some council input before it's actually placed. Now, being that we get paid the same, no matter how many meetings we had, it would have been germane, at that point, probably to call a special meeting, you know, we've got this generous gift, and it's time-sensitive. How do we use it? You know, are we going to put up lights to it now? You know, somebody can run a generator and use it if they need to? What are the conditions, and let's get it installed. And to me, it's not going to cost the city any more money if we can, during the daytime, gather a special council meeting, accept this wonderful gift, and get it in use as soon as possible. And so, if part of what I'm hearing is, is how do we communicate more effectively? We've been talking about this for a couple of months now. How do we learn to communicate more effectively with staff and with each other? And when we get a generous gift like this, and the ice is only going to be here for so long, let's get the warming house into place. That, to me, would have been a valuable use of a special meeting. Let's call a special meeting, accept it, thank them, and decide where we're going to place it and how we're going to operate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 1706.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. I do think it's legitimate to have the discussion, though, if we're going to get items like that. Let's, let's do what's necessary to get it effectively in use, so we don't, we don't run into unexpected expense and, and no policy on how it's going to be used.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Question, were you there when they set it?
No, I wasn't.
You had no idea they were setting it?
I was told that they were likely setting it the next week, and Joe called me and said, it's, it's in place.
And you had no conversations with A&amp;B about setting it?
I, I, I did go over and look at it in their building, and, and I said, I'd like to be able to talk to the council. I said, we're not busy next week, you've got plenty of time to talk to people. And I went over, and Joe had marked out a spot, and I talked to Joe about the spot, and I said, if I were doing it, I would face the door towards the sun, so you get light inside it. And, but I said, you know, they said it won't be till next week, so we have a chance to talk about it. And then Joe texted me and said, it's in place. And so, I stopped by that afternoon, when I was up here for another meeting, and Joe and Eric were in putting down the mats. So, again, I don't presume to say I authorize anything, because we know I'm one voice on the council. I know what they were intending, and like I said, I personally, when Joe said they donated it, I went up and sought out Bill and thanked him. donated it, I went up and sought out Bill and thanked him, and we had a good, long conversation about it. And I had my opinions on where we'd go. When they told me it needs a foundation underneath it, I said, well, it's not going to happen this winter. And, but I said, it'd be nice to, to talk to the council, and, and it happened, so. And I talked to Jess, and my understanding is Mike is the one who ran the project, so I never met Mike. But I think, to my understanding, is Joe was surprised it showed up when it did. So, again, I think it's very generous, I think it's a gorgeous building, I think it will serve the city well, and I would not want A and B to, to think that we didn't appreciate their generosity. We just need to be more organized in how we, we utilize our gifts.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And as I said, I do appreciate their generosity. I just am opposed to how it occurred. We've purchased those boards in May. We've known since before we purchased boards and talked about an initial skating surface, which evolved into a skating rink with boards, that that was something we were going to need. And I think that discussion should have been in front of the council as to what we want, where we want it, what do we want it to look like, how are we going to staff it, how are we going to maintain it, how are we going to do everything? But we weren't afforded that opportunity because something got placed. And, and that's why I'm opposing, and I'm not opposing their generosity, I'm grateful for it, but it's the process that, that I'm not comfortable with.
And we've had that discussion at council meetings over the last period of time, that there's times that you're not opposed to the action, you're opposed to the process. And, and again, I think it's, a big part of it's communication. And we, we do have the ability to call meetings when necessary, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pettinger.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
I thought we were going to discuss the seniors.
Yeah, I was going to say, we, we have to do something about the kitchen. I don't know what's all in it. I imagine it's the rest of the black chairs and the piano.
And, Mr. Mayor, the reason the stuff was still left in there was just so that this could hopefully get a good cure before we started calling it out?
The request by the people did the floor was, it's a 30-day cure, 30-day? They can, it can be walked on in 72 hours, but they prefer a 30-day cure, so. I, I understand that, that, you know, seniors are probably concerned that if they can't function in there, the piano's where a table would normally be, and I don't know what that table's normally used. Certainly, I think we can, we can make it accommodating for them. I don't, I don't recommend moving the piano until we have a plan to move the piano, because dragging that across this fresh floor is not a good idea. So, I think we need to explain to the seniors, some of the things can be moved in, some of the things can't. I, I'm assuming, I don't know who moved that up here, but-
The guys with the church.
As I say, the church must have. And, and we, you know, part of the discussion on getting this place finished is, what do we want moved back in here? I personally would not recommend bringing the metal chairs back in here. Use the white chairs and any others that we can get to, for those people that rent out the building, but the metal chairs, I think, are, should be relegated to grad parties and outdoor things like they've been used. Sticking those out in, in people's yards and then dragging it back in here on the floor, I think it's just going to ruin the floor, so. But we need to make sure the seniors, if they're having a luncheon here tomorrow, can at least use the kitchen, so. I would, I would be willing to stick around tonight and, and, is there a meeting tomorrow?
And the Lions are serving them dinner, so.
So, we can make it so the Lions can come in and prepare food for them, and set up the tables for them, those that want to stay around. But I think the piano's got to stay. For now. You know, the organ could be carried out, I think it's fairly light, and it, it can sit in the corner there. I guess we'd have to go in and see what else is in there. I didn't realize that was in there as well, so. So, anybody who's willing to help free up the kitchen for the seniors and, and set up tables they appreciate, and, and I guess in this case, if you have difficulty with them, you're just going to have to... Is it okay if they call me, representing the council? Does the council have any different opinion here to try and smooth over ruffled feathers? Anybody else want that? Want them to call them?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I believe you offered, working with seniors, Lions, and Church.
Yes. I did, I did put that on the request for council actions. Anybody else have any opinions on that?
I think the seniors, the way it was presented, estimated it could be presented a little nicer. I mean, yes, that is the senior's side. To keep that facility running. I mean, we pay for the power, the water, we take care of everything, and I, I think that could have been asked of us a little nicer, too.
Corey and I encountered this last month as well. And there, there is some smoothing that needs to be done there, but yes, there is a certain approach that could be more diplomatic.
And I don't think the organ and the piano both need to come back in here. I mean, the piano, both pianos just bang down by kids anyway, it's got to be out of tune.
Actually, the seniors do play at their luncheons.
But I think we should give them choice, one or the other, and one of them should go, I mean.
I, I did ask that in the last meeting, and for whatever reason, they want to hang on to both. I'd like to, I don't know how often the organs play, but I do know they play the piano. So, certainly, we can ask again.
Ask them if they had a choice, which one would you rather keep? It gets kind of cluttered in here with all that stuff in here, so.
Yeah, I think now that we've got it cleaned out, we should keep it cleaned out.
Yeah.
Having the big table out of here, and I think we need, we need to make a rack for the tables so that they all go back in the same spot, and they're not banging up freshly painted walls, and, and then we should have either stackable chairs or one rack of good chairs that we can keep up here, and then the rest of it should be clutter-free. It'll make it a lot more useful community facility, so. Any other discussion? Mr. Williams.
I'm just curious, has anybody talked to them about getting rid of the piano and organ and just getting an electric keyboard?
Yes.
Which has, which has piano and organ on it and takes up a miserable amount of space?
Yeah, there's some sentimental attachments, apparently, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second, we are adjourned.
Yep. So, just email me how your motion is. That's probably, that's probably all of them.
No, there was one I seen he had written.
All there.
Yes, sir.
Oh. I just happened to see it.
Yeah, why don't I make a motion?
Because I want to.
Yeah.
I'm rather happy.
Yeah, I don't know, Mike's.